Four o'clock. Please sign the forms. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Six o'clock, Ray. It's six o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I stand corrected at six, six P M. Hey, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda from... When was it? June eighth? No. Last, last June, yeah.
Well, we need to amend it.
Put public comment on?
Yeah, put public comment under consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion's made in second, vote in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Make a motion to adopt it.
Second.
Motion's made in second, vote in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, public comment? Do we have any public comment? Yep.
So, um, for the record, I'm Mark Allen, County Commissioner. I'm working on a trail between, which I brought to you guys earlier, about a trail that goes from Davis Bayou out in the canyon to the Skeet Hill. Um, I've met with Collins Pine. I'm trying to get the town, Collins Pine and Lake County will be the property owners that the trail goes through. And if we don't use the town or we can't use Collins, we'd have to use multiple property owners, which makes it a lot harder to get the trail through. Um, if Collins doesn't go through, we'll have to use the Forest Service Fremont-Lanema. And so hopefully I can get Free, uh, Collins Pine onboard. I met with their C E O over last week and we're getting a map together for them. Um, 'cause if we have to go through the Forest Service, we have the NEPA process, which could take six years. And so I was just wanting the town to be partner with us on that trail. And the trail would be on town property just past Davis Bayou, about a hundred yards. Goes up the hill and then ties into Collins Park property on the other side. And then there's two, two and a half miles of Collins property before it hits Lake County and then down to the Skeet Hill Lodge. That's how the trail will be.
Well, we've, we've talked about this a few years ago about, um, try to do some select logging, open it up for more trails and everything. I don't have a problem with it, the council.
No, no.
So, you know?
So I'll, I'll start sending you guys the information if you guys have a consensus that we can do the trail. And so hopefully it'll be Collins Pine, the town of Lakeview and the county. Um, if Collins Pine does get onboard, we're gonna call it the Collins Pine Trail, since they gave us an easy route to use it. And so, um, I'll give you more information as I get it. So, the total trail's just shy of five miles.
Yeah.
From Bullard to the Skeet Hill Lodge, so. And it'll be an on-motorized, bikes, bikers, hikers and horseback, so.
Cool.
I just wanted to confirm with the town that we can roll with it, so.
I, I think, uh, I think probably by the time you get done with that trail, you'll be looking to put in another one.
Well, that's...
Yeah, I, you know, all the trails you can put in up there, the better, in my opinion. For the fact is, it brings in people, but it also lets people cool up and if they see something wrong, they can come back and report it. Uh, especially for vandalism and stuff like that, so. Yeah, I think it's great.
So you'll need to make it, do a consensus.
Okay.
I would do it, so that it's on record right now, that while we're...
We need it. All right, I need a motion.
Uh, make a motion to approve the time being part of the Collins Pine Trail.
Second.
Motion's made in second, vote in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Vote in votes.
Do you have thoughts?
He said aye.
Okay. I just remember, sorry.
Okay. Um, any more public comment?
Yes, and then that.
And then the...
The...
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Council, Tom Battie, three five eight South I Street in Lakeview and more importantly nineteen North E Street. First, I want to say the new striping that's happened on some of the parking spots is looking really great. Really appreciate the work that our public works has been doing. But I would like to ask, if there's any way we can possibly get E Street striped before the twenty fifth of July for the Ocho I D Street there. That's where we really show off our downtown. We'd like to see it looking as good as possible.
I don't...
Certainly.
Alright, great.
We're gonna, we're gonna stay late Thursday night and Friday night to sweep the uptown area. In fact, we can get that on our website to please park out of the downtown area. And, and we'll reach out to the Sheriff's Department as well, get them to move everything, get all swept up pretty good.
Alright, thank you, appreciate that.
You bet.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have our, uh, home swim meet this weekend and we'll be doing it again actually at the end of July. So we will have people coming in Friday and we will start our swim meet on Friday evening, Saturday and Sunday. And I, in the past, we have done a written request to like close off certain sections of the street and so I was marketing from on D Street from second to like center there, you know, in front of the old Cut Setters. And just for people to be able to camp there and I have permission from Chuck Puddy for people to camp there on that lawn, which everybody's done for years. And then, um, close it off up to the pool. I mean, we'll go up there to, you know, people can park and, um, like the Lions Club will have their food stand up there and we park and we drop off stuff, but I, you know, just for people to, I don't know if we should put cones or something to kind of slow people down, just to not make it.
You want that closed Friday morning or?
No, it doesn't have to be. So maybe late in the afternoon, just when parents come in. I mean, they'll, they'll come in early afternoon. At least there on, you know, the ones that do pull their campers and trailers and like to park over there on D Streets.
What if you come to and made it one lane? Like do it as far close to the hill and just cone off so that there's one lane going up, but it veers off towards the cement slab?
Okay.
Uh, that's just a suggestion. Maybe keep it combed off and do like five mile an hour sign?
Yeah, that would be great. Um, we could...
I don't have a five mile an hour sign, but...
I was gonna say.
We can make one.
Make, make one, yeah?
Yeah. Well, yeah, we should try to bring big, big kids on.
We could put some cones along there to, to kind of wake people up to.
Yeah, right, and we just, you know, I mean, I've had to go out there just, it's mostly usually these U Vs and it's kind of scary going up there. It's like, okay, just water until you get on the other side of the pool.
Right.
Because kids are always running across and that's why, um, and I'm also going to order, um, which I have, a dumpster and some porta pots to help. I mean, we, we do that every year as well. And, but I'm gonna put the, I wanna be able to put the porta pots, we usually put the dumpster on the other side of the street and we used to include the porta pots over there, but, uh, two years ago, we kept having kids just running out and, you know, not even thinking they would just bolt right out and it was made us nervous, so we thought about putting them on the other side and see where I can put them on the sanitation, maybe one in the park and maybe one up by the office. I mean, it just helps with, uh, the use inside there and I don't know how the, is everything good in the?
Everything's good, though.
That's what the, we got, it was outside bathrooms?
Outside bathroom, yeah.
Okay, and do you keep them open?
They're open, yeah.
Okay.
Well, we watered last night. We won't water anymore, so it'll be...
Okay.
Because you're gonna have tents on the ground.
Correct, and that's about the other thing is, yeah, just to make sure we're good to have the campers up there and and I do know that the Lions Club will come and start setting up on Friday. Even though they won't start cooking till Saturday, I think they set up their stuff on Friday.
Well, right, but, um, but you guys are done by eleven thirty?
Friday?
Yeah. I think if they set cones up then.
Or set them out on the corners and...
Yeah.
I know we can do that, yes.
Okay, that, that would work.
Tent on each end or something.
Otherwise, we're gonna call them out.
Yeah. And then I was just gonna ask you about, um, if you had, if you were gonna put in that pool this week.
So. Uh, did we take care of the porta potts or did they?
Yeah, so we usually, we divide us a cost, what we've done, just to help minimize. What it, what it has.
Okay, you're gonna make arrangements for them?
Yes, I've already, yeah, I've ordered them, so, and then the dumpster and it's just like, it's a bigger dumpster than what I have up there, the big ones.
Okay. Yeah. No, it is.
Just because the Lions Club will also throw stuff in there. And I, and we won't have the, I don't think we'll have the numbers that we usually do, um, because, uh, John Day does not have a swim team this year. So they won't, and they usually, they don't send too many anyway and Clem Falls used to come over too, but Clem Falls has like a home, uh, a state swimming, they're disappointed, so, but Frank has a lot of kids, we have a lot of kids and...
How many do we have this year?
We have over seventy.
Oh, wow.
It's, it's a, it's a record, yes.
A lot of young, young ones.
Lots of young ones, we've got the up and comers. We, we've lost a lot of the older kids. They unfortunately decided to go get jobs or do something else.
You're gonna still go and coordinate with one another?
Well, and I coordinate through everything through Michelle.
Right.
So she talks to me and then I go.
Okay.
Okay?
One of the things that always happens, it seems like maybe Jeff, you can, uh, they fill up their gas or something out there, you know, or for their cooking stoves and that kind of stuff, and a lot of times, Jersey's huge. Uh, you know, a week later, there's these huge dead spots on the grass.
That's probably from the tents.
Yeah, and you've seen that.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know how you deal with that, you know, maybe mention it when they come up, you know, watch the gas. I, I don't know.
I don't think it's, I think it's sun, sun damage rather than a tent there.
Oh, you think that's all it is?
Yeah, just nobody should have any...
Well, they used to.
Enough weed.
But not watered.
Something you put those in the grass.
Yeah, and we, we water real good out here.
We air it in, so it's gonna rain. Okay.
Is the lightning storm over by this weekend?
I suppose so.
It's supposed to be real.
What? I know, but... How late are you going to Sunday? Sunday, we are usually done by early afternoon and then we take everything down. Okay. So we were gonna look to start setting up some things on Thursday night, which is our usual setup of, uh, putting up, you know, getting the canopies up there and getting things started and set up on the deck and then and then also we'll have the timing trailer that we will park, so it's like a little horse trailer that we park. Um, so we have to plug in on Thursday night, so then it's, um, charged up. It has all the timing pads and other things and so we'll, we'll set that up on which I hope everything is good and set things up there.
No, I don't, I don't think, it was last year, but several years back, the, the pool water being circulated was messing up the timing pads. Is that no longer an issue?
Okay.
Okay. We have very, very little air, I think it was the air that was, was getting circulated in, it was messing up the timer, but I didn't hear anything about it last year.
Because I know they do things...
We left the circulating going the whole time, so.
And I know that we have, you know, I mean, we do things, I mean, it's two ways and I don't know if it's what it is with the touchpads. But we also, I mean, we have timers, so we always know who really does and I don't know if there's something else with the touchpads, but...
Well, if it is an issue, you call me, I'll be, I can go turn it off and make arrangements.
Okay. Yes, so come up and enjoy this weekend. Enjoy the slow.
Do you have anything else?
That's it, I think.
Okay, so move on. Full business, lifeguard training, opening up the pool. Um, we now have, they are being trained and they seem happy.
Tomorrow's their last day.
So...
They're pretty exhausted, but they had to work their kidneys off. But there are, they'll work half day tomorrow.
Maybe the pool opens the twenty fifth?
No, twenty eighth, Monday.
Twenty eighth, oh, that's right. Forgot about the, the twenty, okay. Okay. Um, need to schedule, reschedule a work session for the dog nuisance. And it's got a council meeting on the sixth, but it should be the thirteenth and the twenty seventh, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So can we have it on the ninth?
July ninth?
Would that, is everybody available?
Uh, so far, yeah.
Scott?
He's asleep.
No, I'm not sleeping.
You available on the ninth of July?
The ninth of July, I should be, yes.
Okay, four o'clock?
Uh, I don't know, maybe it's week, uh...
It's Friday.
Friday. Yeah, okay.
Oh, right? You got a barbecue you do on Friday night?
Oh, is it not that early?
I thought it was Saturday.
No, it's part Saturday morning, Friday the ninth, barbecue.
Oh. Well, that's not gonna work, Scott.
Why, who's barbecuing?
I'm barbecuing for the, for Tom.
They told him to keep it straight.
Boy, that's...
Yeah, glad I showed up.
Yeah, me too.
Oh, okay, well.
Meeting might have gone.
The only, the only other one's Friday the second, but, uh, nope.
I won't, I won't be here.
They won't, yeah, they won't be here. Nobody will be here. Well, we'll talk about it at the council meeting.
But you still have, um...
I won't be at the council meeting either.
Wednesday, the thirtieth, cause June...
On the thirteenth?
Thirteenth, I will be.
Yeah, the, the thirteenth, the twenty seventh is council, uh, in July.
Okay, yeah, I'll be, I'll be back by the thirteenth.
Okay. What was your sound, Don?
Oh, nothing, you're good.
Is that at six o'clock on both those days?
Yeah.
So what day are you saying, Ray?
Thirteenth and the twenty seventh, so. Uh, like building code and nuisance enforcement specialists.
We got a work session date?
Yeah, oh, no, the, the thirteenth is council.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so.
Right. And then we gotta figure out when we do that work session.
Perfect.
Okay. Building code nuisance specialist, enforcement specialist. Um, what on this? What percentage of this is town gonna end up with? One day a week, two days a week, or?
So, we did a data analysis on population. The town is thirty-four percent of the population of the county. And so at twenty-seven thousand five hundred would be twenty, that would be thirty-four percent of the cost of wages. The, the county's gonna take care of the vehicle, take care of everything else. And so all this city would be responsible would be thirty-four percent of the wages. Um, so, and that's...
Is that the amount of time we would get? Is that the amount of time? So like a day and a half?
Get a minimum of that. Um, and we'd be willing to take anything from the town to help us out. But that's what the math is. So.
Now, that's a day and a half every week?
Yeah.
Whatever thirty-four percent is, Ray.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
It would be about a day and a half.
Yeah, twenty percent would be a day.
Twenty percent, twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred, so twenty percent would be a day, like Shannon said, a day and a half, almost, yeah, almost two days.
A week.
A week, correct.
And, and how, how is the time gonna be tracked so we know we're getting the hours we're paying for?
Did you hear?
Imagine through the, through the complaints and through the person that has to write down everything they do. Um, they have to, everything's gotta be legally processed. And so how it happens is they'll be sent one warning letter, then they'll be sent a citation and then it'll be turned over to the court. And, um, so it'll be based on... So can we get like monthly reports of what's going on? I, I don't have a problem with that. They'll have to be reporting to us, so they might as well be reporting to you. So.
Well, that's, that's what we get from the Sheriff's Department is we get a, I get a monthly schedule from Sheriff Taylor. Uh, how many man-hours are gonna be spent in town, where they're gonna be, what they're gonna be doing and what's going on? And what offices we have for the town.
We'll, we'll list the addresses checked or, and we'll list the time it took, whatever you guys need. So.
Okay. I think, uh...
We ready for a motion for this?
I think we need to have a work session and discuss.
Yeah. I agree. I think, uh...
Well, there's two things before we begin before, we gotta make sure it fits within our budget.
Right.
Well, I think we have contingencies for that with twenty-seven thousand, don't we? Yes, no?
Uh, I...
Not your mark for that.
We need to have a work session and go through all this in a work session. And determine what we can and can't do. And what we expect we can and we show us what hours we're getting and everything else.
Okay. I agree. So we'll have to set up a work session for that one as well.
Should we do that sooner than later to try to facilitate getting something done on this?
I hope Scott...
I'm not available for the next two weeks. I'm flying out Friday, our Saturday morning and I will be back until July eighth or ninth.
Okay. Um...
Are we kinda in agreement that we need someone? Or?
Well, we, we need someone, but we have to be able to justify to the people of the town what we're spending twenty-seven thousand dollars a year.
See, and we have a contract with the Sheriff's Department too, as well, it's doing nuisance.
Yeah, but that's not gonna be their priority. Public safety is gonna be their priority.
Right, we've already talked to them.
Right, the Sheriff's Department is very clear about this enforcement is only gonna be done as they have available manpower. Which their understaffs, they have available manpower.
Okay.
So the county's going to do it without, with or without the city? If the city doesn't join in with us, then we'll probably focus on county stuff. And so, I'm just saying. I know that sounds bad, but...
Hey, here's where my struggle, here's where my struggles been with this whole thing, Mark, was we've asked and asked and asked how many hours we're gonna get. The first night that we've ever been told you're getting X amount of hours a week.
That, that's not true, Scott. I've sent multiple emails telling you you'll get thirty-four percent of the time. Multiple emails.
I, I've seen emails where they've asked for thirty-four percent of the wages. I haven't seen, seen any emails that have come to me from you or anybody in the Commissioner's office that has said that you're gonna get thirty-four percent of the time. Because it's a question that we've asked and asked, I have not seen any answer. And that's where, where my hesitation is.
Okay, well, why don't we, uh, have a work session on this one as well? Might be a long work session between the two of them.
Well, the, the, what we need to do is figure out if we got money in the budget to fund it.
Well, that's what...
And, and at what level. I mean, the highest that they're asking for is thirty-four percent, but they would be willing to take it to something like this. So. We just...
Well, I, I'm, I'm fine, Shannon, with the thirty-four percent. I don't have a problem with that, but it needs to be very clear and very black and white of what we're getting and that's supposed to be the struggle. You know, Mark said he has sent emails, and he has, and he hasn't gotten to me or, I don't know if anybody else in the council's seen them. But I haven't seen any emails and it's been a question that I have personally asked three or four times of how many hours we're gonna get and how it's gonna be tracked. And tonight is the closest I've gotten to an answer to that question.
Okay, well, us having a work session isn't gonna get all those answers if we are remaining amongst ourselves and not have the Commissioners involved with it.
No, we need to...
The Commissioners are hard to love to be involved.
Yeah, they, they need to be involved. Yeah, we all need to come on the same page on this. So we'll just...
So Mark, can we schedule a work session and, and one of you guys show up?
I would.
Alright, let's move forward with that.
Couldn't we be represented at their Commissioners meeting? If you guys had a consensus, then one or two of us could go to their meeting and probably accomplish the same thing.
I think they should work through it together personally. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I don't, I have an issue one way or another. I just think we need to figure out how we can support it if we can.
Yeah, we'll have to look, check the budget because... Alright, let's move on then. We'll set up a work session on that at the next council meeting so we can get this done. Alright, um, cameras installed at the shooting range?
I have installed no cameras at shooting range.
Okay.
What are you hoping to accomplish with talking about cameras? I, I don't really understand fully what we're supposed to do.
We're trying to find out who's doing all the excess shooting and...
Are you talking about the one that's way up there or the one that's at the shooting range? Because I call the shooting range, the shooting range.
That's, well, yeah, that's, that's the one.
Down way back up?
No, we need the shooting range here.
Oh, right here.
Somebody's shooting Tannerite there too.
Well, it's against their rules, I don't know.
Right, but nobody can seem to find out who it is. And I'm getting complaints and they're complaining.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't really feel like that's a public works issue. That's more of a law enforcement issue and I don't know.
Bring, bring these cameras and all.
Okay, I think...
We'll figure out where to put them.
I think Michelle may still have them.
I'll talk.
I don't, I don't, I, I don't know. I don't have them in my office. They went somewhere.
Okay.
Okay.
What would have looked for me?
I was never really fully, I didn't really understand if you're trying to police that area way up past the shooting range where people were shooting the propane tanks and there's a propane tank up there right now that's been shot. Um, but, or if you're talking about the, the real shooting range that's down here, I, I don't, I don't know if people are shooting stuff illegally that are members of the club or, I don't really know what you're asking.
Okay.
So the complaint I got is people are hopping the fence. They're shooting up there, they're also vandalizing up there. They are also going up further where you see those two. So there's that. The last thing we need is a fire up there that's gonna burn right down that canyon and right into town. And then we are in big trouble. Because Tannerite, that's, that's bad and people need to get, like, we need to get the word out that we're not messing around. Because the last thing we want is our town to burn down for the best time.
That's what's starting to fire, but somewhere like a couple of years ago, it's a Tannerite.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll get with Brad from the gun range and see what we come up with.
Okay.
Is there power there, you know?
Uh...
No power up there.
Solar.
Alright, let's move on to new business. Um, we have a new resignation letter. So, and it's been advertised in the paper. And so I have one letter came, came in. Have we gotten any more?
I haven't gotten any.
Okay.
I'll look at the advertisements, I'll look at them.
Two weeks. Two weeks. Uh, move on down to budget. Budget worksheet in here. I went through it. And the Budget Committee has approved the budget. You have any, anybody here having more on the budget?
Um, we made the, uh, the changes requested by the Budget Committee upon our approval that the changes we made when we are in this.
Okay.
So we just need to approve it with, by resolution.
That's ten fifteen.
Yeah, right, right here.
Yeah, it's ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen?
Resolution ten fourteen?
Ten fifteen. Ten fourteen is, okay, ten fourteen is this year's budget. Um, it's kind of the end of year sync up to take, um, what you agreed upon verbally during the year that was outside of the original budget and bringing it into compliance with what we actually did. So that when the auditor looks at it, he can see that you approved the changes that we made to the budget during the year.
So do we need to approve ten fourteen as well?
We need to approve ten fourteen as well, but they're two separate resolutions. One is to clean up and fix this year's budget and the next one is to approve next year's budget.
Uh, make a motion to adopt Resolution ten fourteen.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded to approve, uh, Resolution ten fourteen. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can motion carries? All right, let's move on to Resolution ten fifteen. In matter, matter of the adopting the annual budget for the town.
I'll make a motion to, uh, adopt Resolution ten fifteen in the matter of adopting an annual budget for the town. Second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next motion carries. Um, move on down. Discuss properties to be abated. I have another. Okay, this is ordinance eight thirteen.
Yeah. So these properties that we have listed are repeat offenders that have been given, um, the.
Is that in this package? It is.
Yeah, it's the last two pages of, or, yeah.
Oh, I got this right now. Okay.
So the ordinance is, uh, prior to the property abatement papers. So I just wanted to walk through this with you. I've, I've got a question over to, uh, the attorney to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So these, uh, properties have had letters written to them. They have had, uh, over the last two years, they've had multiple letters sent to them. Um, and so as I'm reading through our ordinance, it says that if they have had fire notice um, within the last two years, I can use this ordinance. And it's section two defines what is, um, defined deemed as a nuisance vehicles, animal waste, dangerous animals, out, you know, junk, um, machinery, anything that's just kind of being a nuisance. Um, that I can, in section four, um, after the letters have been written, I can, and there has been no appeal, which there hasn't, um, I can then move to section six on page five that says if a nuisance has not been removed or abated within the ten days, which they have had more than ten days to do, it's just nobody's been following up with that, that I can go ahead and, um, abate the property with, of all the junk and charge the property owner, but if they don't wanna be charged for the cost, I can add ten percent for administration fees and leave the property. Um, I'm just making sure that that is actually what I can do and that the records that we have been sending to them are in order so that we can just go and abate those properties and get all that junk off.
Are some of these vacant?
Um, some of them are, some of them are.
Are condemned.
But they're, they're lived in there. They should not be having people within them.
Right.
They should be condemned actually. So, um, when I was driving around looking at them, I was embarrassed that I was, I'm a landlord. I don't wanna be that. Um, and it's not new information for these property owners. The town wants them to clean up. Um, so I'm just putting a bite to it. So I know that the county is looking for us to team up with them, and I'm not sure what their ordinance is. Um, I haven't looked at it. I'm just looking from our perspective in the town that I have, I have the, the power to do this and it's been approved. And I'm gonna do it. Um, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention because it's, um, it, it's, I started to go through just to find vacant properties, um, for another project I'm working on. And I, I only could do like four streets, you know, like, or something, just, no.
S- so is there any ordinance? Cause I know there's probably a state law that if it's like a level of livability or else it, it will have to be condemned and no, nobody can inhabit it.
I, I haven't looked into that, but I believe that we can, if it is a serious blight to the community and we know that it should not be uninhabited, I don't know the steps to that, but we can condemn. And I believe that there's probably about three or four of these properties that really.
So when they're, when they're condemned, are they like destroyed and removed?
Yes, they are. And I, I think that we need to follow through with that. People should not be living in those type of properties.
Sounds like the firemen won't get some practice.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if that, um.
Well, the problem is squatters sometimes come in.
Well, that's what we gotta look at too, is the liability.
I don't know as I'm gonna get to all of these properties, but the main offenders that we have had problems with for many years, I'm gonna go for. Um, because certainly they're a blight to our town and to the neighborhood and to their neighbors.
And this is even half of them. Like this is even half of the town. This is just a portion of the north part.
So I just, I don't think that there's been anyone, um, managing the bite that can happen to the property owners, which is where I think it's been, they've just been able to do it because there's no force coming behind saying, you mean it? We're serious. You need to take this truck car off your property. It needs to be stored somewhere or, uh, need to get rid of it or sell it. So I'm, um, following up on that because it is part of the objectives that you guys gave me to do. Um, which kind of goes into, uh, goal four. We have, um, been having great success with our cleanup efforts. The, um, trash dumpster in front of Town Hall, we've already had to empty it once. So people are really taking advantage of that. I took advantage of it this weekend and that was great.
And the other ones over there?
Mm-hmm.
Just any four of them, yeah.
Four, three yard boys, yard boys.
Yeah, but it, it's, it's really cool. It, it's really cool to see people coming and just dropping off their garbage and for us to be able to be a part of that. Um, so I wanted to, you know, weave it into a goal and objective that you guys put me forth to do, um, and to manage it. So I think that maybe that only a couple of properties with, uh, me coming in and cleaning them out for them is gonna send a good message to other properties that we're sending notifications to. So.
Now, how do those doctors, you stay there till the twenty ninth?
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct. So I will, um, I'll, I'll follow up with everyone with an email confirming that as I read the ordinance is how it's actually stated, as I understand it, to make sure that you're aware that, and then to give you the few properties that I'm gonna start with.
So another question I have, is there an ordinance about having travel trailers on down streets?
There is, um. I haven't tackled that yet. It's like I got a big, big project which is clearing out properties, um.
I, I've had a little luck reaching out to the Sheriff's Department, uh, when they're, you know, really in the way of causing the hazard.
My wife almost got T-balled in the day considering her ass.
Right, right.
Okay.
And so I could probably give you that address. I can probably.
Well, it's, it's gone now, but, okay, you know, I'm sure that's a whole place.
I mean, there, there was something that we hadn't swept around in two years, and I'd, you know, give a written notice four or five times and.
But if we didn't want anything, that was enough. We've gotta be fair across the border. We can't just.
Right, right. It's just not good policy. You shouldn't allow it. You know, somebody wants to pull something out there and leave it there while they're loading and unloading, two or three days, it's fine. They have companies come out of town, even a week, you know, is better than six months or better than a year round.
But you up to five days.
Most people are here around, just leave them sitting there half on the street. Then they put the, most of them not possible.
Slide out. Yeah, well, of course.
Well, I think it's, as a council, you guys have been clear about the fact that you want things to be working efficiently.
Can you put something in the paper, just a, an ad in there and then, you know, down the road, then we can tackle that.
Now, we have a really strong ordinance on that with teeth, uh, for.
I have that written on my wall.
If we wanted to go farther with it, we, we are surely within our own rights.
So.
Well, I, I have one more thing that I'd like to address these guys on, that chlorine issue that we've been experiencing.
Can you pause just for a second?
Yeah.
So I don't know what this means for you as you're discussing the, uh, paying for a nuisance officer with the caddy. I would like to see if I could, you could give me a month to implement on a couple of properties and then we'll have some data to go for to see if we need more, um, like an actual officer taking the heavy lifting for us? Or if we can do it on our own? I don't, I don't know. We just don't have any data to say one way or, or the other. Um, and I don't want it to sound like I don't think that the nuisance officer for the county is, is more or less important. I'm just saying that we may be able to do it on our own because of the ordinance. We just haven't had anybody enforcing it. So, um, that's just information for you when you're deciding on what you wanna do.
But it could be a full-time job for somebody. I mean, just the, the letters and all that stuff and everything, like, and, and your dogs or whatever's. You know, if you guys be working on other stuff, or the people that be sending out letters to you.
And there's some properties, when I do this, there's days where you spend three or four days on two properties alone.
Would, would you get somebody if that was their job, and then you guys could foot the stuff?
Well, that's the only thing I'm thinking, you know.
Right, it needs to have a lot of attention.
Exactly. So I'm just giving data for you guys, that's all. Um, because it may be one of those things where like I give, I, I gotta, I gotta do something different. We need, we need to pay for, uh, countywide nuisance officer.
Maybe we just say it's working, maybe we're okay. I don't know. I don't know, well, and that's where travel trailers will fall in. It's not just cleaning up the property, but the nuisance officer, because it is a nuisance.
Well, the other problem, we've got two. We've got some dogs living in travel trailers.
Right, I know.
On properties.
And I, um.
And I do believe there is an ordinance on that.
There is, but I think if we follow in the planning ORS, I think we'll get a lot further. And I talked to Jay about that through line, so.
I definitely think we have a lot of work in front of us.
Yeah, we do.
That's for sure. Okay, back to Jeff on the thing he was gonna talk about.
Yeah, there's been a, a couple of things circulating about a nationwide chlorine shortage. We use it to, to disinfect our water. We use it to treat our sewage. So, uh, this, we reached out to our vendor that's over with us and said they're not as affected as the Pacific Northwest as a whole. They're coming out of southern, more southern. But we could still be affected because those places in the Pacific Northwest that need it are reaching up, you know, and getting it wherever they can, but. Uh, so we've shut down our sewage treatment plant, uh, the, the contact chamber for the time being. So that's gonna, it's not gonna affect too much. Uh, we were way short on, on water to irrigate for the ag farm and one other, uh, irrigator that filed a water right on us. I think we'll satisfy his water right here shortly, and we're probably gonna run out of water here in about two weeks. So we're gonna need to advertise, and the school will get a, a crop off the field we've been watering for them. But it's gonna fall way short of what has in the past, uh, so I don't.
Are they getting their water from the sewer ponds?
Yes.
So how's that gonna work with the red, red rock?
Well, the red rock really doesn't use that much of the water. They're just taking it and using it to cool their system that we turn in five eighths of it.
That's still a significant amount of water though.
Well, we're, we're getting back three quarters of it, you know, so it'll be a little warmer. And then, but on a normal year, we have more water than the ag farm or our other customer really wants, so. And what, what is a normal year now? Maybe this is a normal year.
Have you gotten a drill on the Willie?
Well, eight is repaired and a new pump is ordered.
And that was the one where everything was clogged up?
Yeah.
What did they end up doing?
We ended up shooting it with a detonator cord, uh, two times, uh, to split it out. Just shot it, yeah. And it, uh, it was still too bad, which happened to the shot, to put the camera back in it. But it sounded completely different, the second shot than the first. He said, that, that's the money right there, you know, you can tell. Really muffled and really, just barely feel it the first time. Second time was a nice clean ring, you know. You see that, that, I thought it was gonna be really good, good, so. Shot the thing twice. He felt a hundred percent sure that it's repaired, so. I felt strongly enough to go ahead and, and order the pump. And tell him to come and put it in first, if available, chance. So we're gonna advertise hay to hay fields probably in two to three weeks. Uh, we'll be completely out of water and we'll just, uh, at the end of the year, if the chlorine shortage is over and we have chlorine that we can use for that purpose, then we'll go ahead and treat this water and send it on into the holding pond. And if it's early enough in the year, we can go ahead and water our pasture. We can do pasture that field after we cut the hay off of it. We'll be watering a few times at the end of the year if it works out. I think it's best, you know, to save the, the chlorine that's available to treat our drinking water.
Is there, uh, how long that chlorine, can you store it for a long time?
Yes. We can store it up to a year with full, full capacity. But we're storing right now as much as we can legally have in our possession. So it'll be two to three months probably of chlorine for water only. So.
Okay. We should be okay with it.
We should be fine, yeah. And that's what our vendor told us. I'm just being cautious, you know, because it takes just as much to treat the sewer as to dig the water, so. We have enough for, you know, four or five weeks. It's gonna, ten, so.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Scott, you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, hearing nothing, then we'll adjourn the meeting at, uh, six forty-nine.